It's still early, so I can't.
I'm going to call the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, July 21st, 7:00 PM. Two selectmen are present physically. One selectman is on phone due to health reason, so he's staying home tonight. That's Justin. And the town administrator is here recording for the citizens of Dunbar. And it's Mr. Leo Martel. Listen, Robert Martel. I stand corrected.
Someone print everyone out right now for the summer.
Okay. But we'll leave it at that, and Bob will have it distributed and uploaded for the citizens of Dunbar. Dave, we have some minutes which have been looked at by all three selectmen.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the 7:00 PM regular meeting minutes of July 7th, 2022, as amended.
I'll second that. Any discussion on those minutes?
Nope. I think they're pretty well written, a couple of small changes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Justin, thank you for your input, even though you can't be here, but your input was so noted.
Yep.
And I'll make a motion, next one, to accept the special minute meetings, non-public session of July 7th, 8:45 PM.
Eight, okay. You've got to mind the order. That's fine.
I do the 8:45. We have an 8:16 coming. And these are not to be sealed. And do I have a second?
You said a special meeting, but they were non-public.
Non-public, right.
Okay. I'll second that motion, Mike.
Okay. Discussion now? I thought there were a few changes. They were amended, but the thing is, there was a, I have no issue with.
No, they're amended.
All in favor?
Got it.
Aye.
Justin, not voting for these remote?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, Justin, you can't vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the 8:16 PM non-public meeting minutes of July 7th.
I'll second that. I thought they were, it was straightforward.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Justin, you can sign the minutes. Well, he?
He doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to, correct.
Get the quorum.
Yeah. Corning Secretary needs them.
Correct. Okay. All right. I'm going to open up for public comment first. Mr. Kaminski, you're on the schedule. You're on the agenda, so don't worry about. Bob, anything for public?
I'm going to have it in a second.
Okay.
Just some information.
Okay. Understood. Don, you're on the agenda too with the Garden Club. Okay. All right. I'm going to close public comment, and I'm going to go right to the town business. And Mr. Robert Kaminski, Tucker Hill, is here to talk about concern. Just speaking.
Where are you at? Want me to?
You don't, you have to say, be comfortable. We're easygoing here usually.
So, yeah, I would just like to raise the concern about the construction truck traffic that's been apparently diverted onto Tucker Hill Road. I raised a concern a couple of months back.
Excuse me for a second.
Go ahead.
Can you just have it moved closer than home?
Sure. Come on up closer. In fact, why don't we, we'll pull this chair out here. Just pull this chair out here if you can be with us.
Part of the gang.
Yeah.
So, I raised a concern a couple of months back when I was working from home, and I was seeing lots of trucks going up and back on the road. And I believe I spoke with the town administrator, Lean, and it seemed like, I don't know if my call had anything to do with it or not, but a week or two later, the traffic was back to normal.
Okay.
And then about two weeks ago, bam, you know, the traffic has been getting really bad, and it raises three concerns. First is the safety of the neighborhood. The pedestrians, there's a lot of small children in the, on that street, and, you know, they're on their bicycles, a lot of adults ride their bikes. I see a lot of joggers out there. So, you get these heavy, heavy-duty trucks going back and forth, and they're not necessarily speeding per se, but they do make a lot of noise. I worked from home on Tuesday, and I counted no less than probably 20 trucks that went by my door. I was on a conference call like this, and nobody could hear me during the time that the trucks were going across. So, it is a concern about the quality of life out there. You know, we moved out here for the reason of the tranquility, the serenity, the quiet. And, you know, with these trucks going across, that's no longer the case. So, the other concern is the structural integrity of the road. If you walk the road, you'll see there's a lot of latitudinal cracks going basically from end to end of the road. Just about in front of every homeowner's property, you can find a crack. I walk the road pretty frequently, and I don't believe a couple of years ago I saw this many cracks. So, it does appear that there's some integrity issues that are being brought up. You know, so it's just going to add more cost to maintaining the road, and if we don't do that, then it's going to be a much bigger expense a few years down the road, and that's going to hit the taxpayers. And I'm sorry, it's very restrictive.
We passed a bond, and the taxpayers definitely know roads are not cheap.
Exactly. So, those are my three concerns.
Okay. I get wind of it through the road agent a short while back, about two weeks back. And Lean, I understand you did some research on it.
Yep. I did reach out to the road agent, and then through the building planning department to find out what a taxpayer's rights would be in limiting through traffic. And I believe back when we first adopted or accepted that road, they originally had thought about making it a dead end, and that was voted down through the planning board.
Town wanted a through road.
They want, and that's favorable for the fire department as well. They don't like dead-end roads.
And maintenance.
Is there a reason for the increased number of trucks? I thought you had some information on that, too.
Well, just recently, the highway department informed us that there is a fairly large bridge in Ware that has been red-listed, and they are in the process of working on it. So, typically, because there's some of that Mount Williams material site just over the town line on the other side of Everett Road, I'm sure that they're trying to find, they're being redirected this way to get to their delivery routes.
So, Bob, to help you with your concern, that bridge went from like a 50,000-pound rating to a 5,000-pound rating overnight. So, the people that are leaving Mount Williams that are trying to go northward and not southward on River Road, as they had in the past, used to go out to 77 and the main roads and filter through town that way. Now, they've diverted through. Bob was at a meeting a couple of weeks back, and somebody else was complaining about traffic not liking it over on Ray Road in town, because there's increased traffic on that road of construction vehicles as well. And unfortunately, Bob said, you know, I'm in the same situation. I don't like it either, but I live on a road that has a pit that had a bridge diverted, so Bob's getting the additional traffic as well. I think you saw a lull in traffic, because there's several houses being built down here over the Goffstown line, some in Dunbar, where they're coming through here trucking, and there happened to be a lull in construction on some of them sites, so you had to break a window. And I think you're going to see that continue. As those houses get finished up, they'll have a break, then they'll go on to another house, and you're going to have that same pattern. As selectmen, Jeff brought it to our attention, because there used to be a no-through trucking sign on there that was taken down about six years ago, because it was something that couldn't be on that road. And we had some other signs that we were putting up around town, limiting speed on different roads, and we found out that was illegal for us to be doing as well. So, we have certain limitations we have to live with inside, and unfortunately, some of these things we're going to, we're going to live with, you know?
I think Leo Martel was, we have a dirt road in town, and the thing is, Leo's the bane of our existence when it comes to complaining about, sharing his concerns about the road in front of his house. And a dirt road is even more challenging sometimes. You think, well, it's dirt roads, it's dirt. No, it washes it out too often.
With the spring mud.
And the spring mud. And that's a, it's a constant battle to keep it maintained. And on top of that, UPS loves cutting through there at high speeds.
So, we're limited somewhat. What we can do as a select board in reference to regulating those roads.
Speeding, we can, we can have more patrols put on. The Dunbar Police Department, but we can't restrict trucks per se.
Once they pay that registration fee, they have the same rights as you to go over those roads.
We can't, you said you can't put signs up that limit the weight limit? I mean, I see that in a lot of other roads, right? You know?
If your road was built to all of the other standards in town as far as those roads go, your road is built probably to better standards than most of these other roads, actually, because it's more modern road.
Right. And there's 13 that is built to even higher standards, I would hope.
Right.
And why can't they just take, I mean, Mansion Road has just been totally repaved. Take Mansion Road all the way to 13 and make that left turn. Now, I'll tell you, that turn on Everett Road onto 13 is no picnic either. And these big trucks, they don't have a good view of either traffic coming from the northbound or the southbound. And if anything, it's probably a better turn to go Mansion to 13 and, you know, not use the residential roads. People live there. You know, we try to respect when there's a town and you lower the speed limit to 25, it's because the houses are close to the road, right?
Could we, just a thought, we do business with this company that's in Ware.
Yep.
They, they're not the people trucking.
Okay.
It's independent.
Okay. I was going to say, if it was, we could just chat with them and ask them.
And it's really out of their control now that that bridge is, the people that go whichever way.
I was just thinking of the blocks.
You know, and our bridge down there, not for nothing, we took, what, six years to replace our bridge just for funding and whatnot. It might not be a quick fix.
Do you know which bridge we're talking about? Ray Road? Is it the?
The dirt road there, right by the transfer station?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. I take that one.
We had that bridge out, you know, and so now, now that's back on, but it took us about six years, I think, to replace that bridge for funding and whatnot.
And how many complaints did we get, Lean?
A lot. When they, when traffic came back.
Yeah.
They were liking the dead end, and nobody would take that road. But now that it's through, everyone's using it to go to the dump or shortcut for hauling and, yeah.
Guilty.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I guess the only thing we can really address would be if they were speeding, we can address that. We can ask the police department to step up.
I didn't hear them say they were speeding. They were kind of going at the upper limits of the speed limit on the road.
Is there a speed limit sign? I mean, what is the speeding limit?
No, it's just 30.
Any residential road in Dunbar that does have a sign, I think it's 35 miles an hour.
Probably borderline whether they're going over that or not.
In fact, in fact, I find more, I find, as also residential, I find more residential cars speeding, especially in the morning on the way to work.
I would agree with that.
And the thing is, it's like, I'm counting, 1,001, 1,002, 1,003, they're zooming through the, through the, up to the Everett Road.
Especially when they're, when they're going northbound on Tucker Hill, they get by my house in the middle of the road. They have to start to accelerate, and you can hear that acceleration in their engines right in front of my house. So, it's double annoying.
All right. This, as a side, as a resident of Tucker Hill, you know the stop sign at the very end of Everett Road and the one that no one stops for?
Yeah. Right.
Thing is, I'm considering of making a stop sign, a yield sign. I've taken it out completely so people can make that turn. If you remember, Everett Road used to go all the way down.
Straight.
Straight.
Straight, yeah.
Straight through that, like, pathway now?
Yes. That used to be a road, and there's no traffic on that at all. And so, I'm, one thing I want to do is get rid of that yield sign, so you don't, a stop sign, where you don't have to stop or yield, do anything. You just keep on going like 95% of the people do.
Right.
Those are all yield signs in Dunbar.
But I just.
Another thing to keep in mind is recently, we started, Jeff, our own road agent, has started doing that culvert on Robert Rogers Road. So, there may be some of that truck traffic, maybe our own, doing the maintenance on our own roads just.
He shut that road down for a portion.
Right.
Yeah.
So, because again, I used to drive trucks, dump trucks, and it's not easy to make that left turn from Mansion Road onto 13. And again, it's a town truck doing that, even if it's a hired truck doing work for the town. I would cut through that road as well to get down to Robert Rogers, getting down to Jeff.
Yeah. Former truck driver there.
You know what I mean? So, I think it makes, it's a coincidence that the time period makes sense that it's the last few days, because I just came from my house, and that road was a detour. So, that may be our own truck traffic. So, just keep that in mind as well. So.
So noted. So, I think is, we haven't relieved all your concerns at all, have we?
No.
It is a path that we've been down on different roads in town. I guess the only thing you can kind of do is, they are building, I think we have almost 50 or 54 new house lots in Dunbar just this year, which is kind of a banner year of house lots available, because the subdivisions happened to come in, because the market was good. But I guess maybe just take it with a little bit of a grain of salt. One time, your house wasn't there, and the truck drivers had to get to your house, too.
And I understand if there's construction being done on Tucker Hill Road, that's fine. I mean, people are building.
But they had to get to Tucker Hill Road from the other roads, right? So, one time, they drove from the sand pit to Tucker Hill. Okay? And they used all the other roads. Now, they're driving through Tucker Hill to get to other roads. So, see where I'm coming from?
The thing is, we don't have the, we don't have authority to actually put a restriction on the road, no through trucking.
Right.
And that's, the only way you're going to do that is if we could block off the road, and that was before, before my time and before Dave's time. For safety reasons, they wanted to have it so the fire department could access the subdivision that way instead of having to go all the way around.
So, instead of that stop sign, why don't you just put a gate?
I have thought, I have thought about that. I have thought about that.
And only the residents of the street have the button that opens the gate.
There's, we have a member of the public, former selectman, Bob Martel.
I was just going to say that unfortunately, you know, they are all residential roads. Even though Mansion is a state road, Everett Dam is a state road, they're in residential areas with children that play at some of the houses on that road, and those trucks barrel down those roads, that makes no difference. But unfortunately, they discovered a shortcut by taking Tucker Hill Road, eliminating that hard left turn onto the highway. It's a lot quicker, even though you'd say, in a truck, when you're sitting up high, you have a better view than the cars have. And they're taking that road, and they're, you know, it's just a more expeditious way.
And their GPSs might be even sending them that way just because it's shorter.
Unfortunately, the pits are in that area.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the town truck goes down my road in the fall quite often with, whether they're hauling sand, stone to bring over to the shed, and they're steady. And then you have all the other trucks. And so, you wonder, you know, what's going to happen if some kid is there, but it is, it's a residential road, and they're able to use it. And, you know, we've tried to address that before, and it's been pretty difficult, because sometimes you miss stuff.
Yeah. We've made a few missteps, and we've had to go backwards on what we've done, so.
Do you have another comment?
Well, part of two is the truckers are probably trying to save fuel, because it's probably $2.50 more a gallon now than it was. So, they're looking for the shortest, easiest route.
Yeah. That's a good point. I had to think of that.
For the record, those comments came from Bob Martel and also Darren Larson. Thank you.
And then unfortunately, it doesn't solve this problem. But I, this is the wrong place to bring that, and if you're going to go somewhere, you may want the police to bring that forward to a different venue.
Although I will tell you, the police have been out to a couple of different sites just recently where the perception of speeding was there from somebody being in their house. And when they did all of their seven weeks' worth of structure and checking traffic, the top speed was just 2 miles an hour over the speed limit.
30. I think it was 30 in that.
And for me, I think is, if you, if even last week, if you look at last week's video, what was I complaining to Dave about? It said, even going through town, the 30 mile speed limit, I was complaining about the traffic right here. It's 30 mile speed limit, and they're going like 40 to 50.
On our road.
Yeah.
I mean, why is it 30 on 13, and you said it's 35 on our road, right?
Right.
Yeah. That's just the town district section that they flagged that, too.
This, this area right here is considered congested for Dunbar.
Thickly settled.
Thickly settled, yes.
Whatever that means.
Okay. Well, Bob, I appreciate you sharing the concern. If, if speed becomes a problem, we can address speed by putting the speed monitors down if we have to. But our hand's a little bit tied of what we can and can't do.
Well, it's good, it's good that you came in, because at least you see our side of it now, because we've, we've gone down this path in a couple of other areas and had to work our way backwards, so.
And there's no way we can petition up the ladder to try and resolve that one restriction you're talking about? About the signs?
I think from what Chris said was that we can.
We can ask him again.
Yeah.
Okay. There is a, I think there is a mechanism, but it's, it's more secure, it's more difficult, I thought.
Well, we have to prove it at the state level.
Right. It's got to show, you got to show evidence. And the thing is, just deny a truck, deny a truck, because what are they, what law are they violating?
What law are they?
What happens is they pay.
Residential traffic.
No, but the thing is, the entire town of Dunbar is residential, if you look at it that way. And so, why can you go on?
There's state roads and there's town roads.
Right. There's state roads and town roads, but there's a lot of town roads, and we can't just arbitrarily say, well, you can't go on this one, but you can go on this one. And just like, you know, Mr. Leo Martel in the past has said, you know, why can't we restrict the UPS trucks from going on his road? Well, they're, they pay taxes, and they pay registrations, and they get the ride on that road like anyone else, and they use it as a cut through.
Yeah.
And it creates all sorts of, for him in the, in the summer, it's like the dust clouds. And that kills them.
And in spring, it's mud.
The bud. And so, go ahead.
We could check with Chris, the chief of police, and then NHMA legal again to see if they have any recommendations.
Yeah. I do know that that was flagged, well, through trucking was taken off, so.
Yeah.
That was several, several years ago.
I highly doubt they're going to want us to put it back on since it was on there, and they made us take it off.
Right.
Little children at play signs, things of that nature.
That could be.
Just to keep it in the back of their head, you know?
That could, that could be put on there. I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
The children.
Slow children.
I think that would be something Jeff would reference Jeff on.
That's something we could.
Except something, right?
Yeah.
But keep in mind, if we're allowing all this traffic on the road, that it's going to start showing wear and tear.
But you keep saying we're allowing it, but we don't have the rights to restrict it or things like that. That's not just your road, it's like that all through town.
Well, if we're not blocking it, I guess we're allowing it, right?
Well, you can't block it.
Right. So, we're allowing it.
You know, it's funny, the thing is, I see my neighbor on the opposite side, two houses down from you, she has the little kids out at desk with the little bicycles. And the thing is, I say, thank God it's not during the day.
Yeah. Exactly. Doing it around noon or 1:00.
Right. Yeah. But we hear you, and the thing is, the sign is something I think we can definitely embrace. And we'll check with the road agent on that.
And it may not do a lot, but like I say, if it puts an idea in the back of their head.
As I recall, they, where they had the sign, right at the beginning, at the road, they had the sign there on the first house. I think the pole is still there. It's an empty pole.
I always find that a ball in the edge of the driveway on the ground is always a deterrent, like, there's going to be a child that's going to be running out after that ball.
There you go. Let's all get soccer balls and put them at the end of our driveways.
Okay. So, Bob, any other concerns? We hear you, but the thing is, we're kind of limited, as Dave.
I just wanted to voice my concern.
And.
Get it on the record and throw out, have a discussion about different ideas.
Nothing happens.
Yeah. But I think, I think at least we can, we can embrace the sign. We'll look into that. Okay? That's something for sure.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice to meet you.
Leave it out, leave it out. We're going to have the next person come right up.
All right. I've bonded up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Bob, take care. Hey, Justin, how's the, how's the voice sounding over the speakerphone?
Good.
Okay. Great.
Hello, Justin.
Hello.
Okay. Don, you've got a garden club update for us.
Okay. As you can see, we've got the majority of the landscaping done.
Oh, I didn't even see it. I came in the other way.
Oh, well, you got a new truck, and you're probably just high and mighty now. We're going to engrave the rock, and these will be two and a half inch letters and that, and the date on it. And I happen to have a solar spotlight that we can put on it at night, so.
You're going to color the letters, too, in the rock?
Oh, yeah. Everything will be carved in, and then black.
But no color, blackened, yes.
Yeah. Insetma black, like the bench out here.
Sure.
And this is the Times New Roman, which the town uses, so, you know, we're trying to keep, you know, the same style.
Put 200 years after that date I was born.
Yeah, I think so.
Now, that date's confirmed, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's, that's what we're doing there. Couple of things on the Old Home Day that we're working on is we're going to have a pie baking contest. So, this is our entry blank that we're having, and I just want to get official permission to utilize this office for gathering of the pies Saturday morning of Old Home Day.
I think it'd keep the bugs off it, I think.
Yeah.
I think that may be worthwhile.
And the judging.
Yeah. What do you think, Dave? And where are they gonna be eating the pies?
Well, what we're going to do is we'll judge them here.
Okay.
And as you can see, there's a slot for a number, so that, you know, you won't know whose pie is what.
Okay.
And that. Then after we're judged, we take them over to the food tent.
Okay.
And then when we do the ice cream at 2:00.
Yeah.
They can have, you know, one line will have it spread apart, so they get their pie and then ice cream at the end of another line.
I think that's a great concept.
Yeah.
I just don't think if you ate pie in here, it'd be a little messy, could be potentially messy.
Oh, yeah. No, we, this would just be the judges and staff in here.
Lean is town administrator. Do you have any issue with that?
No, I'll let the cleaning crew know that we're having our Old Home Day on that day, but they usually come in on Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
The only thing I'd like to remind you, Don, is that we try not to let a bunch of people down the other end using the bathroom and the rest of the building and that type of stuff.
Oh, we can close these doors off.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, 'cause the only time the public will be coming in is when they drop off their pie. And the restrooms are gonna be right here, so there's no reason to utilize the town restrooms.
I think we'd be closed off the doors for security reasons.
And it is a town.
Oh, function.
But it is a town function, so we don't have to worry about any 501C's or anything like that.
No.
I have no problem with it, as long as we don't get into the bathroom situation again.
Agreed.
And we're still in a work in progress, because it is a town function and that. But this is the postcard that we're gonna be direct mailing probably the end of the month.
You know, the pie, are the prices a little bit low, cash price is a little bit low?
Well, we're up to $400 right now in our.
That was a little humor.
No, 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 no. We had them up to $50 for first place.
Okay.
And that. So, like I say, it's a moving target.
Okay, very good.
But, you know, we may add some more classes, you know, it just depends.
Okay.
You know, but we'll have.
Because Lean will probably work on the pie and she'll probably want more than $30 when she wins first place.
But we don't know which pie is hers.
Well, I'll slide you the number. For the record, anyone listening on YouTube, that was a little bit of humor. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We've got five double side banners that we'll be putting up here shortly. They just came in today. So, they're just real simple, you know, Old Home Day, have fun, the date, time, boom.
Okay.
And we'll put them in five locations. I know I can't put it on the commons and that, but Dave lets me put it at the phone company.
Right. Just where the, I think people have noticed before, you can't put them where you interfere with the rider with a looking at the traffic.
No, I realize that. But I can put it, it's two ways, they can see it from both sides on the phone company.
Can you coordinate with Lean for maybe putting it on the website? And coordinate with Lean for putting on the marquee too?
Yeah. Yeah. We got Old Home Day on the marquee now. Mark put it on there today.
Okay, great, great. Okay. Well, just the website, we can do the electronic website.
Yeah. And I'll get you, what do you need, a PDF or?
Yeah, a good one.
Okay, PDF of it, and that way people can go on the town website and get it. So, we wanna get as many people as possible, 'cause that's more pie, you know, more ice cream.
Exactly.
And, but we're in the process of getting our talent finalized.
Okay, great.
And that, so.
The stage is gonna be here this year too? The stage?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely. And we've got the Wiz Kids, which is like Mr. Wizard, remember that program in the 50s? Well, that's kind of what they do, so, you know, it'll involve the kids and everything else. And then we've got a magician who, a different one this year, and he needs 45 minutes to set up. So, we're trying to get, we can't get Wildlife Encounters, but we got another wild animal type show and that, that we're gonna slip in between while he's setting up.
Okay.
And then Lisa, for Nina, Verdina is, and we'll have some talent and they'll furnish music to fill in between stuff.
Okay.
So.
Dave, any concerns?
Nope.
We've got, we've had some new additions to the Old Home Day Committee, Megan, and she's been doing all the talent booking and stuff like that.
Megan.
Megan, yeah.
Do you know her last name?
M-O-W-R, Morgan, Morgan. She's on Purgatory. She's new to town.
Hello.
Yeah, new to town, so.
Great.
But she jumped right in and she's been super. And that, so, everybody's working together.
Ice cream.
She sits down here.
Ice cream, scoop scoopers.
Oh, yeah. The guy's gonna scoop ice cream?
Mike's gonna have to scoop. Mike and Justin.
Yeah.
Justin, you hear that?
No, I can't hear him. You guys broke up.
Well, you're not here, so we're signing you up.
Yes. Justin will be the lead on the ice cream scoopers.
So, but we'll have our celebrity ice cream scoopers.
I wish I was there. It's a fun day.
Yeah, it will be, and we'll have a lot of entertainment, a lot of music, and we'll just, you know.
Looks like a great plan again.
Yeah. So.
I'm glad it's back.
Yes. Well, last year after COVID, we canceled the first year.
Yeah.
And then last year was a great, I mean, a great event last year. I think you're gonna have an exceptionally good event this year.
Yeah. Well, we've got a lot, instead of a pie eating contest, we've got a pie baking contest.
Right.
So I think it'll be a lot of fun.
Just so you know, the contractor out here has told me that they are gonna bring everything in closed.
Yeah.
So you'll have most of the paved parking area there.
They've moved inside. I know they were wiring today and stuff like that.
The only thing that they've done in the past, and I wanna make sure, we're not gonna offer any tours of the internal building this year.
Right. Yeah. And the Town Hall Restoration, which I'm also part of. And that, they're not gonna have, they're gonna have a tent, but they're gonna, I'm putting together photo boards so that people can come in and see the progress and answer their questions, things along those lines, and, you know, just informational. I know I'm getting them already, you know, how do we go about utilizing it and stuff like this? And like with the groups and that, the Garden Club, you know, to kind of work with the library, we'll move our meeting either to Monday or Wednesday or something like that, the second of, Monday or Wednesday of the month. The Amets wanna have.
I think the only thing we were really against was the clog dancing for like 50 people.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, Don, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
We look forward to having a great.
Oh, another ice cream scooper.
You already asked me. Scoop for me, scoop for you.
Okay, Dave, we're into schedules.
All right, we'll see you guys.
Thank you, Don.
And we wanna go out of order and get Linda to take care of her?
Just wanted to bring up one thing that Don said. We got another committee member. Those committee members should go through the board first, so there's an official appointment and approval.
Okay.
There's liability issues or for whatever, it's just protocol.
You needed them to stay for that.
I wasn't gonna shout.
Well, we just sent him an email.
Yeah, just a reminder that when anybody.
I would, when they're added to the committee, so noted.
Yeah, they should go through you first.
That's a good recommendation.
So basically, what Linda's saying is the committee makes a recommendation to the board, the board agrees, and then she does her appointments and you make the motion.
Right.
Certainly, the board would never turn anybody down, because we need all the committee members we can get. But I don't also wanna put together the town report for next year and somebody come in and say, hey, I was serving on that committee, how come my name's not on there?
Right.
And here all along, nobody ever knew.
Right, right. Totally agree.
When you see Dawn, let her know she's not a member yet.
Yeah, I'll send them an email, blast the email blast, and then they'll get ahold of her.
Yeah, and then just whip up a.
We can do that within two weeks, we have it.
Actually, if you wanted to make the motion, you appoint her tonight.
I don't know what her last name is.
Oh, and he didn't know.
He was, it was a testament.
They will be on the agenda the next meeting, because they have unanticipated revenues that they've been collecting over the last couple of weeks.
He said she just moved into Purgatory, Bob?
Yeah.
So maybe you could scooch back and look at the list.
Yeah.
And then if they make the motion tonight, they can just sign the paper when they come in, 'cause they're not meeting for two weeks.
We'll sign it next time, man. It's not a deal.
I don't wanna discourage them.
Give us something to do the next meeting.
They don't wanna discourage them.
No, absolutely correct. Okay, you want to do the other one?
Sure.
Okay.
Transfer station, like?
Start with the transfer station.
All right.
You have a spr.
You remember what I said, Mike?
Yes, I did. I like that philosophy. I did.
I just saw these today for the first time, so.
And they go together, so they get one.
Okay.
Sorry, it didn't stay for them.
Okay.
I don't have a transfer station in front of me.
Yes, it's that one right, let me see. One of the big sheet.
Ah, it's clipped to the police officers. Okay, got it.
No.
No, it's not it.
Right there.
Ah, okay.
It's all stapled together.
Gotcha. Okay. I think what Lean did, she put it in two columns, current and proposed, Dave.
Yeah.
I like that.
The first one is construction debris and demolition.
And by making it all one, it makes it easy to ver.
So the cover sheet is what, what he proposed to the board. He's changed the wording slightly, so, and then combined a few of the descriptions. If you go to the second sheet, you can see a few that are struck out, only because he's changed it slightly.
Okay.
So if I'm reading his cover sheet correctly, the demolition was between 175 cubic foot up to 250. He's proposing raising all, any type of demo up to 250 cubic foot.
Dave, I have no problem with that. He keeps the brick at the same price, so it's a zero sum game. He's not raising cement, the heavy stuff.
No, he is. That was at 2, and now it's 250.
No, 250, he's going to, saving it at 250, unless it's wrong.
Which schedule are you looking at?
Looking at Dunbar.
Is it 2000?
Do you have this copy for the, oh.
Oh, that's the, okay.
Now you wanna look at this page versus the new.
The spreadsheet or the little one, Lean?
Yeah, I don't, I would go by this one here, because I'm not, I didn't get a chance to add everything in here and verify that the rates that were used on the Dunbar line are.
Oh, I see, I see. So you're looking at it compared to other towns on the other one.
So, right behind the combo sheet, there's a 2019 effective schedule that we adopted. And before that was a summer schedule from 2012.
So is that what this is?
I'm looking at this big sheet and I'm thinking maybe we used the wrong fee schedule, which I put a line through. So we're going from.
So you gotta look at 2012, 2019. That's what it was in 2019.
Right. So I will update that sheet. Unfortunately, I only got these late this afternoon. So we're looking at a 175 up to 250, and they went 175, 225, and 250 up to 250 straight across.
So one goes up 50 cents, one goes up 25 cents, and one stays the same?
I think it's probably for math.
I'm gonna tell you one thing. You know, keeping them, they're separate now, right?
Right.
I don't mind them all being combined, but I just wanna tell you, when you, when you look at things like plywood and pressure treated and windows, those are bulkier type items. So your cubic foot adds up quick, but they're not as dense as like shingles and bricks. So, I actually like them being separate only for the simple fact that I think the cubic foot price should be a little bit lower on those items, because they're bulky. They don't have a lot of weight to them, but they're bulkier.
So, give me a proposal then.
I'm looking, I don't mind going to 250 on the 225 and the other one staying at 250, but I think we oughta just stay at $2 a cubic foot.
For the plywood?
Yeah.
I'm happy with that.
Pressure treated and all that.
I can go with that. So the only increase will be the, it'll go from 175 to 2, 225 to 250?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And that way there, we are bringing it up, but like I said, those items are kind of bulkier and they.
See that, Lean? Okay. Next item, it would be, he's recommending no change on toilets, lavatories.
Yeah, sort of, kind of tops.
Okay.
No change on the next one.
Okay.
Actually, the next one goes from, that's the 40 gallon trash from $12 to 15, and that's for the second container. The first one is no charge to residents, one per week.
Shingles and all subsequent barrels are $12 to 15.
I can, that's reasonable, I think. No, I'm just gonna. Some of the other one, some of the other folks.
Yeah, let's leave that for now. We'll keep going on through. If we wanna come back, we'll come back.
Okay.
I mean, they might give, the whole purpose of reviewing them now is what you have, we have to post it as a public hearing.
Right.
And that gives the residents.
Can chime in too.
Gives the residents the opportunity to come in and speak and either agree or disagree or give their concerns about the changes of the fees.
13 to 15.
Yeah, appliances, any unit with freon, $13 to $15. Tires.
Thing is, just, Dave, it goes from, some people from $12 per unit to wear up to $20 in Alton. And $15 seems like to be the average across the board, if you look at some of the other towns.
But these are old numbers.
Right.
Oh, these just came through my emails, and we put it together on a spreadsheet so that we can compare Dunbar to neighboring towns.
And the problem is freon is one of those things, you have to, they have to be professionally evacuated. It's not done by our own crew. They have to call someone in to do that.
I know people do have the option when they're ordering new appliances to have a removal by the appliance delivery company, and that usually runs $25 to $50 to get them to take it out, so you don't have to deal with it.
Tires, $3.
Yeah, he's reworded it slightly on his cover sheet. He now has new description, bicycle, wheelbarrow, small carts, $3 on or off the rim. He's combined the remainder of the medium sized tire to lawn tractor, can be more detailed, lawn tractor car, light truck, motorcycle, ATV, UTV, up to 20 inches, $3.
Went up to four. Oh, he added that.
It went up to $4, that's correct. So there's an increase of $1 there.
Commercial, then auto tires?
And then auto tires is up to $8 on the, oh, no, so he's got two prices there. If you take it off the rim, it's $4 for your tire, up to 20 inches, and then if you don't take it off the rim, it's $8.
I would say the prices he's proposing are very reasonable compared to other towns too. Nothing, this doesn't come out of the ordinary. And remember, it's a zero sum game. We have to pay for that, pay for those items to be removed.
Tires.
Commercial truck tires.
Yeah, everybody else is higher. Merrimack, Alton, Keene. It would be putting us in line with Molten Bar.
Where do you see their truck tires on the?
On the big sheet.
Truck tires.
It's like the second, third item down, you have to kind of roll the page back. It's tires, passenger or motorcycle or truck tires.
It's a, we have 22, 6, 8, 10.
Oh, I'm looking at the trucking size tires.
Right, 10 to 28 each in Alton. I don't know, that's a, that's a big increase, Dave, on the truck tires. What do you think?
I don't see any of them at 22 there.
One, one is.
10 to 20?
10 to 20.
I would say 15, although, commercial truck tires are huge, I don't know.
What does it cost us to get rid of?
Goes into the demo. It's just added.
Well, where, where is that 22?
Where's that 22 right now?
Yeah.
We could go 20?
I think he's just trying to match them, so we don't think.
Where do you see where 22?
You're right, go down, right about here.
I don't know. I'm trying, trying to catch that one.
Here, okay.
Dave sees it.
I see one goes up to 28 there, Alton.
So the regular sized tires are small, is lower. He's asking for $4.
Off rim and $8 on it.
$8 on the rim for a regular 20 inch.
I see because it separates them?
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, there's labor involved in that.
Yeah, 'cause he has to quarter or cut the larger ones to get them in the demo.
If you, he explained to me that if they're cut, he gets less money for them.
Oh.
I just had to blow out my lawn tractor tires, so I was asking tire questions. So we cut into that.
Dave, I thought 22 was a little bit on the high. Make it 20?
20.
Propane.
You want 20 on the truck tires?
Yeah. Now, going on to propane tanks? Notice that new, any cut in half or filled with debris, price doubles. That's something, item new. In other words, that's what Linda was alluding to. In other words, if the tire, we have to pay more if it's cut up.
Oh, really?
You see that, Dave? Okay.
Any cut in half or filled with debris.
So don't cut your tires up. Okay, propane tanks. No charge for the small ones.
That's the same.
Same charge, so we're good.
Yeah, no changes there.
Bulk waste.
Just new wording, the 30 to 100 pounds, that was it. And then he added helium and fire extinguishers, that's new, and no charge.
That's pretty nice, okay.
Bulk waste. He changed the wording slightly. He included mattresses on that first line that I put up there.
Mattress box, bean couch, lovesley, sofa chairs, wheelchair.
Kind of just condensed it.
$7. And just out of curiosity, some of the other items, they go from anywhere from 15, 10, 10, 15, 10, 8?
Stuffed chairs.
To me, I think that price is reasonable, Dave.
The only one I don't like is the $30 hot tubs, pianos, fiberglass tub shower.
Too little?
I mean, the fiberglass tub shower.
It's huge.
You're gonna crush it up and just put it in a.
Right.
It's a bulkier, I mean, you're gonna crush it up, put it in construction debris.
What, how do you wanna, just, what would you recommend there?
I don't know, maybe 25. 30 seems like a big jump on it.
25 is good for me.
Do we see it on the other towns?
I don't see any, well, no.
I didn't see that item bumped up.
I'd say 25 is reasonable.
Okay, we'll go 25.
25 on.
The hot tub piano. That's a bargain for a piano though, know how heavy a piano is?
It is. When you get to the piano, it's reasonable, but when you get to the other items.
Correct.
So we'll just take a happy medium.
Okay. TVs, all TVs, $15 each.
Yeah, he kind of condensed it all into one, and it's all TVs going from 5, 10, and 20 up to just 15 each.
You know, but the thing is, my TV's my computer monitor.
You're gonna pay 15.
You're gonna pay 15? He's not charging that.
No, you're gonna pay 7.
Gonna pay 7?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the story.
Yeah. And then there's no change with the, or no charge for the VCRs and swap shop. That's the way I interpret his fees and how he put it on the sheet, so I will confirm it with them.
Oh, he has, he has nothing for monitors and CPUs and laptops.
Yeah, if you turn on the back, there's a couple of numbers there.
In other words, it goes with the line above it. Microwaves, fax machines, printers, scanners, copiers, monitors, and CPUs of laptops, all seven.
Oh, okay.
See how it's written?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Dave, I'm ready to move on to the next one.
Does he have any questions?
Any questions, Justin, on the transfer station?
Nope.
Okay, Dave, ready? Okay, Dave, ready?
Um, all I'd like to come back to is the barrels, twelve to fifteen. Doesn't seem like much, but it's...
Well, remember, the first one's free.
Yeah, she'll, I think we'll leave it.
At fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, just for my clarification, where he generalized all the tires together up to twenty inches, it's four dollars off the rim and eight dollars on the rim. Those are the new prices proposed, you're good with that?
And twenty dollars on-off rim for the, for the, uh, for the truck tires?
Yeah.
And double for just halfway cut-up tires.
Yeah, okay, no changes there.
As I stated at previous meetings, you know, we're all residents, we don't get a lot, um, of services, especially when it comes to disposalist stuff, so... I hate to double dip too much, keep it reasonable.
I concur. Okay, next, next one recommended we go through.
We have a real, uh, quick one, the building department...
Okay, building department's up.
She only had two recommendations, um, the solar permit, it's fairly new, um, we adopted it in two thousand nineteen, 'cause it was getting a lot more, um, common for that type of permit. She wants to increase it from seventy to a hundred.
I'm okay with that.
Why? What's, what's, I mean...
What's the big look at that?
Yeah, yeah.
He doesn't have to go out and do an electrical inspection in combination with it, that's the only thing I can see.
Okay.
But imagine they're gonna pull an electrical permit like they always do.
Right.
Two, so it's gonna be a hundred and fifty.
That's fifty dollars for that, yeah.
That's a...
I don't, I don't see any reason why that one fee is so high.
Yeah, and in other words, what, why are we, it was supposed to be encouraging green.
I mean, the commercial square footage, there's only a hundred for the permit fee there. I can't believe it's actually seventy already.
I, I go, I, I give it ten dollars.
Make it eighty?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
So, you wanna propose the eighty dollars?
Right.
Yeah, does anybody know what other towns are charging for?
I don't have that information, I don't know.
And so noted that Mike made that change for Donna.
No, but the thing is, I, I like to just, if you look at some of the other permits, a gas permit, I think, is very high, highly, uh, highly safety issue, only fifty dollars. Chimney permit, masonry permit, fifty dollars.
I think some of them others, um, because, like on a house, you get multiple permits, so they're adding a lot of those together.
Right.
So, but I, I'm agreeing with eighty, Mike, I think it's a ten-dollar increase and...
And, and it's a lot to go on top of that.
Yeah.
Okay, done with that, Lee.
All right.
And they're residents. You know, unless they tell us there's a lot more work with it than...
Right, and that's where we can, we can listen to them. If any, if anyone disagrees with any of our recommendations, we'll, I'm amenable to listening to the case.
Yeah.
You know, they can come into that open, they can come at that meeting.
Public meeting.
Yep. So, the second change, the application fee increasing that ten dollars, you're okay with that?
Yes.
That's all the administrative...
Absolutely, I have no problem with that.
I did get, um, Linda's recommended fee schedule changes. She just handed those to me.
This looks...
Linda who?
Town clerk.
Oh, town clerk.
So, really, on that, the only thing you need to look at is the one in red. Uh, most of the fees that I've got are statutory, you can't change anything. The one in red, right now, every time I issue a license plate or a sticker, you pay two dollars and fifty cents, that's built right into your registration fee. There is a statute that allows you to add an additional fifty cents to that fee, and I'm proposing adding that fifty cents. Like, I've got three vehicles, so for me, it's an extra a dollar fifty a year. It's not a huge increase.
It's the two, it's the two fifty mandated by the state?
Two fifty is the municipal agent fee, yes, that's in the statute.
Isn't that agent fee the one everybody complains about? It's the online agent fee, right?
No, it's the online stuff they complain about.
Well, one, at one time, as I recall, uh, your salary could have been tied to fees.
It was tied to fees, yes.
Right, but it's, that's no longer, so it's, doesn't, you, you get no benefit out of this. The town gets a benefit.
I don't benefit out of this, but, uh, the reason I'm suggesting doing this is, is budget season is coming up, and we'll be looking at, um, deputy salary, deputy hours. And last year, I did, um, a little over five thousand car registrations, so an extra fifty cents a registration would be twenty-five hundred dollars for the town. And it would just kind of help supplement...
I have no problem with that.
And we are getting so much busier.
No problem with that.
So, that's the only one. As far as the online fees, that's already so high, um, right now, it, it just barely covers the cost of postage, which is now fifty-seven cents. We get a dollar every time somebody gets something online.
And the dogs, you did those a couple years ago, recently.
Right, but the, the online stuff just really covers our cost, and right now, we haven't exceeded our cost on it. And I want to encourage people to continue using that service. We had a little over a thousand done online.
One-third of the town.
Transact, just transactions, whether they had one item in their cart or ten items in their cart.
Sure.
Was one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine last year.
Okay. Dave, I have no issues with that.
Nope.
Justin, any issues?
Nope.
Okay, Lee, next one.
Okay, the next one was, oh, um...
So, Linda.
Thank you.
We just did, Linda, I think you have police department?
Police department, okay.
I seem to be missing that one, I think.
I have it.
No, I didn't put them here, the, it's the memo from Chris Remillard.
Got it?
Justin, do you have that? The revised?
Okay, um, he, when they gave us a nice letter, what does he want?
This is in reference, uh, I'll speak to this.
There's actually two requests there. The first one is a different...
I'm speaking to the...
That's right. Looking at the email for the specialty.
I want you to speak to that.
Special detail, uh, for Meadowbrook and Guilford. He's looking for permission to allow them people to work there. The rate he'd like to close for his office is fifty-five dollars an hour, the remaining fifteen dollars an hour to cover the administration fee, which is concurrent with what we now have for administration. Um, Guilford pay rate is seventy dollars per hour, so he's dividing it out with the math rate, and it looks like it's gonna be five dollars an hour more than when they work in detail, which I'm fine with.
Okay. But are we gonna keep the administrative, uh, on the...
At fifteen, yeah, 'cause remember they were talking for bringing it down to twelve?
Oh, no, no, no.
And I did send him an email to tell him that, you know, at least my position on the board was to keep our administration up at fifteen, which...
Right, they had space for his vehicles on the road.
I think he understood, and I said we had discussed it before, so...
Okay.
Okay, so there's two things here. The first one, he just spoke out about...
Was for Guilford.
Yeah.
Meadowbrook?
Yep.
Special detail.
Gotcha, no problem.
And then the proposed fee schedule change, um...
You have one with an X on it.
Yep, the one that's dated dra, uh, stamped draft is the one that you want to look at.
And that one for Guilford is because there'll be no cruiser fee, because they're gonna take their own personal vehicle up there.
That's right. And that rate is flat for what they're, Guilford's offering the seventy dollars an hour of flat fee to the town. So, how we divide it up is up to us, too, yeah.
We could reverse it, fifty-five to the town, fifteen to the officer.
Yeah, and the next thing, I sent Chris back an email, 'cause we kind of felt it out in our earlier meeting amongst our board. And, uh, Mike and I had been part of this the last time when they wanted to reduce the admin fee. Um, he'd like to change the, um, fee schedule for when we have the private party details that go out. And he's revised this so that the proposed new one would be fifty dollars an hour instead of forty-eight for the officer. The cruiser would get bumped up to twenty dollars instead of eighteen, keeping the admin the same at fifteen, giving us a total cost of eighty-five dollars an hour, which we looked is in line with...
The rest of the...
At least four or five of the others, so...
Right. And they're not all coming to us for all their details.
And I told him that I didn't think that we would, as a board, go down on the admin fee. I know that it includes on some of the offices a lot more work than others, and Lee's broken that down for us several times. It looks like he was in agreement with it, sent that proposal, new proposal, though.
To revise one.
Yep, yep, so...
Justin, any issues on that new proposal?
Nope.
If you look across the, uh, the spectrum, the high is ninety-seven hooks it, they don't want to have their officers go out, and the low is, uh, Pembroke. And I think we're, there, there's a couple, seventy-three, seventy-nine, eighty, two eight, two eighty-five, so we'll be smack in the middle again, which is, I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Okay, I recommend no changes, as, take it as presented.
Okay.
And then the last one is the copies for documents throughout the town. This is the fee schedule that the town offices will typically charge for different types of, um, copies. Um, and the very first four, five, five items, um, are related to the planning board. And Donna had commented that the site plan review regulations, which is on here, is a three-dollar fee, is twice the size as the zoning ordinance. So, she, uh, between us, we all agree that to be consistent, any of our regulations should be, uh, at the ten-dollar fee.
And then NC means no change, not no charge.
That's correct, I apologize. I will, I will expand on that for the final.
It's good. All right, um, so the, basically, the subdivision is, is, goes up a little bit, site plan review goes up a little bit, the reg, regulations, okay.
And then there's some redundancy here. I think I'm just gonna take out the zoning map, lander size map, and roadmap, because they're considered copies, and if anyone wants...
What's a property report, Lee?
Um, on, on occasion, we have an appraiser or a logger that wants, um, either an entire list of the town, either by acres and whatnot, and they...
Everybody who owns property, okay.
Yep, and they will, and that is public record, so they'll get that. Um, I understand from, uh, some of the people requesting these is that other towns do charge more for them, but this seems to work. And then they are also allowed to get them done and sent electronically. It's just a matter, um, tweaking the report the way they like it.
And just to note, our subdivision regulations and site plan regu, regulations are all online, they can print them themselves.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
And the thing is, uh, we've been charging twenty copies, no charge, and then copies over twenty, at fifty cents a copy. Is that a little bit high? Is it just my, just me?
No, that is for, uh, town residents. That's been like that since I've been here.
Okay.
It hasn't changed.
Do people actually come in and use our machine?
They probably charge us ten cents a copy.
Who does?
Who does?
The library.
Is that because they make their own copies through a machine or something?
Yeah, it's right to get...
No, it's 'cause we fund them.
Because I was, I was over there doing some genealogy research when I printed a letter, and I said to Lisa how much, I have six pages, sixty cents.
You're competition.
So, I'm gonna get all my copies over there.
Personal one.
You get twenty free here, no charge.
You know, Mike, you could make it twenty-five for residents and leave non-residents at fifty.
I, I, I like that.
That's a better idea.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I gotta, Dave, a lot.
Okay. Twenty-five for...
For residents?
Yeah.
Residents?
Yep.
Could you still say that Mike made the change?
All right, I like that. Um, and I'll just consolidate the size of the sheet to be general.
And I suppose the library, they better raise their rates. All right, that's fine.
And then, as you get down to the bottom, um, the address list, um, property reports and labels, those are according to what we've seen in the past. Okay, no change.
What about the address list by email? Do you charge for that?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause you have to create the report and then export it.
Okay, just want to make sure, because the thing is, it's time involved, too, by the, uh, the staff.
That's what it is, yeah.
Okay.
And that's the only change there. And I think we've covered everyone. John Wigan does have, John Wigan does have fee schedules. He raised them fail, um, at the two thousand nineteen public hearing. He did not have them ready for me today, so I don't know if there'll be anything forthcoming. You guys can always make that final change at the public hearing. I just would like to have the draft proposals for the residents to read.
Gotcha.
Remember, when we list them out, we have to have the fees printed.
That's right. And now, with the public hearing and the, in the newspaper, I can generalize to say, go to this website...
Yeah.
To get the detailed list of fee schedules.
In fact, they said that, uh, if you have it on your website, you don't have to do a newspaper any longer.
Is that right?
We've got our email today that you sent us.
It's in here? Oh, I'm gonna read that very quickly. It's usually, uh, close to a hundred and fifty dollars to put in the paper.
The email you sent us today had it in there.
Yeah.
Said that, from the, from the legal?
NHMA legal, yeah, sweet.
It said that we no longer have to go to a newspaper any longer, 'cause it's not being read.
Right, correct.
If you have it available on your town website and printable.
So, is that a cost savings major, cost savings?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, read that to make sure I'm not wrong, but...
Okay, I will, because I didn't read that, and I didn't read the whole thing, but it does, what I was really concentrating on with Donna is she wanted to possibly review the planning board fee schedule, and, um, she asked me if the selectmen control that or if the planning board. So, just to get clarification, we sent the email out there.
The planning board controls the, the zoning and, and planning, correct?
Correct, yeah. So, I will read that in detail.
All right, can we move on? I'm gonna close the, uh, discussion on the, um... Justin, I'm sorry, Justin, Justin, any more concerns on, on fees?
Nope.
Okay, the only thing we have outstanding is gonna, we're gonna give the chief, fire chief, an opportunity to get to us and give us, uh, some input, and we'll include that if he has any major increases.
I'll read you the paragraph. Paragraph B says, "In lieu of publication of a paper of general circulation pursuant to sub-paragraph A, notice may be posted on the municipality's internet website if such exists. If notice is posted on the municipality's website in lieu of publication in a paper of general circulation, the notice shall appear predominantly on the website homepage or link directly. To notice shall appear predominantly on homepage, be posted at the time stated in sub-paragraph A, and shall remain on the website until conclusion of the hearing, and three, be posted in two other places."
But that is for the RSA six seventy-five seven. The one up above, it's RSA forty-one nine colon nine A four, which is, governs the...
Right.
Selectment control. Um, it does say that the selectmen shall hold public hearing, notice of which shall be given at least seven days prior to the public hearing, by posting in a, two public places in the town and by publication in a newspaper.
So, one contradicts the other?
Well, this is our, your RSA, which we've adopted, forty-one...
Right.
Colon nine. That is notice of the planning board's, um, fee schedule, and it's pretty much similar to their zoning amendments and other things that they, they conduct for business.
Applies to the planning, not to us.
Not to us.
So, just keep doing it like you have been.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I can see the future changing, though.
Yeah, um...
Eventually.
Yep, almost had a, that's what's...
So, that being said, I do have time to get this in for our next meeting, if you, if you're okay with me moving forward with that.
Absolutely.
I think so.
Yeah.
It, um, I need seven days, so I should be able to get it by early.
We just gotta get John, uh, Wigan his...
His input, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll close that part. We'll go to mailbox items, Dave. Okay, there, there was, we had a report come in about the expenditures for the, uh, uh, construction project, and they're asking for another payment. It's been approved by the engine, uh, by the architect.
And just so you know, from the inspections that I've done along with the, um, structural engineer, it looks like they have work far and above this second payment.
Okay. Uh, I have no issues with that. Uh, you can see how much work is done. We have a small delay in windows, as I understand, and that's gonna hold up the siding.
Yep.
Um, and so I, I'd be a little reluctant to make the third payment based upon not having the windows in the siding.
As long as they keep going on the interior work and plastic it off, I don't have a problem.
Exactly. So, uh, are we in consensus, Dave, to make this payment?
Process that, okay.
Yep, we're in consensus. Uh, Justin, any concerns about that?
Nope, not at all.
It's their second payment, and it's probably, uh, one-third of the cost. It's approximately one-third through...
Yeah, there's still over five hundred, five hundred and forty-something remaining.
Yeah, it's a little bit less than one-third.
Yeah.
I'm happy with that. Okay, thank you, Lee.
Okay, very good.
Okay. I like to, uh, Dave, um, last time we met, we, uh, gave Lee some direction. She coordinated with the, um, town clerk. And, uh, Hope was leaving, uh, Hope RC was gonna leave the town, employment of the town effective one August, as I understood. And Lee reached out to her after talking with, um, the town clerk about it, and, uh, she, Hope is interested in taking the job.
Uh, which is a full-charge bookkeeper position.
Full-charge bookkeeper position, step one, and, um, it's part-time, and she, it'd be effective the departure date of, uh, her departure from, uh, August second, I believe, from, um, from the town clerk's office, and right, she'd be working for the town administrator.
July twenty-ninth.
July twenty-ninth, exactly.
And I wanted to make sure it was in coordination with you, Linda, as far as the whole thing went. You're okay with it all?
I think you folks are getting a gem, I think.
That's good to hear.
So...
It was nice to, you know, work through the departments that way and do it, that with the right order, I think it helps a lot with everybody. So, we're all still working the... I think it helps a lot with everybody. So we're all still working the same building, by the way.
Exactly.
All right, now, can I just bring this up? Linda and I have spoken. Um, it's going to be a lot of learning for Hope. And I know Linda's maybe in a bind where she is left without a deputy. And, um, we've discussed possibly using Hope to fill in a shift here or there. And I've left it up to Hope if she thinks that she can manage learning and then continuing, um, maintaining the deputy position. Maybe not in that title or capacity, but, um, Linda, how do you feel about that?
Um, I'm still looking into the possibilities. I haven't really...
Okay.
If you, if you do have a vacation coming up very quickly and you feel more comfortable doing that, I, as a selectman, don't have a problem with it.
But I, again, I don't want to, I only think about Hope. I, I don't want her being like pulled here, pulled here, and pulled...
And I've been thinking about that too. So I just want to take a little bit more time to think about how I'm going to do it because it's really important that she learn the position with me. I want to get paid correctly every week so that as she learns that, better off we all are.
We've got to be sensitive. She's a human being. We've got to be sensitive to, uh, her needs too.
And it, yeah, and it's, it won't be fair to pull her back and forth. So I'm, I'm, just let me work through a little, what's the best way to transition her with the least impact?
Now, have you started advertising?
It's been on the town website all week.
Great. Any, any, any bites?
No.
Can we put it on also, um, it has to be a town resident?
Must be a town resident.
Well, I don't know that...
Yeah, I see it advertised a lot with NHMA, but they advertise it differently. I don't think it's a...
They're looking for assistance.
Can, can we just put it on the marquee out here, say vacancy out here? Because people drive by. They don't always look at the website. I think they would see a, a marquee.
That would be great if they did. Hopefully, they'd see that more than they saw the dog licenses do sign that was out on the marquee.
Well, true. But we, we don't, we don't, we want, I don't know if we want a dog owner, at least the one who's deficient.
I thought about asking, um, Chris Remillard, asking the chief if he would put it on the police department's Facebook page.
That's...
If, if he's okay with it and if you're okay with it, um, because that gets a lot of...
Absolutely, absolutely. We've got to look at where, what's getting the hits out of town bond residents.
Good idea, because mother's hours are...
I'm not advertising mother's hours.
You're not, okay.
Okay. But the thing is, I, I think, if you can, if you can, if you can get some wording out over here too, I don't mind putting it out here for a little bit. Because you drive by, you're always looking to see what's new there. What I don't like is after the event has passed and it's still there.
It's still there, yeah.
Okay.
So it is, yeah. So it is on the town website.
Okay.
And I have asked people to email me, not call.
Right.
Because I, if I'm with a customer, I'm with a customer, and I'm not going to pick up the phone.
Okay, so I just want to make sure. Okay, then, uh, Dave, I'd like to make a motion. It's our, it's an, uh, uh, should I, should I say, our domain now. I like to make a motion that we hire RC Hope as a full-time charge, a full-charge bookkeeper, step one, at a rate of nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents, part-time, effective August first.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay.
And again, we left the qualification end of it to the uptown administrator, so...
Correct.
If she's happy with it, I guess...
Right. She'll be on the standard, uh, probationary period and all that. All the, uh, personnel plan, uh, rules apply.
And it's a part-time position.
A part-time position. Uh, that, that's to be cha- addressed as we grow. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Justin, I, I know you can't vote, but do you have any concerns?
Nope, not at all.
Okay, I just want to make sure you're, uh, we're listening to you. We are. Okay, um, there's another email. Okay. This is my fun one. I wish, I wish Chief Remillard was here. Because, uh, I remind him about Old Home Day last year. He had his officers on horses. You could give him a good deal on hay for fuel.
Oh, geez, that's funny.
Well, here we got a letter from, uh, from the chief, just, uh, alerting us that he's been, uh, uh, doesn't have much of a few budget left, and he's going to probably be overspending. So the horses may become a reality.
And I think this year, that's expected, maybe in a lot of departments, they will use either their entire amount or slightly over. But, you know, there are the lines in their budgets that they can kind of look at to tighten up the belts on those ones too.
I gue- I guess it was courtesy. He's just letting us know.
Yep.
And it was so noted.
Better to know in advance.
Right. Tell him that his pay raise may not go through because of this. And the thing is, for the record, I was only kidding, Chris. All right. Um, public comment, Bob?
Well, I, I do something. I had a discussion earlier this week with Mike because I was on the site for the Department of Labor. So I'll give you an idea of what area your wage increases will be.
Dave said no more than three percent.
Economy's dying. Good look at that. Economy's dying, Bob, a half a percent.
Well, I'm going to tell you something. You're looking at the wrong numbers. It's the first time we have inflation that has a higher end everywhere, and that's not diminishing. New Hampshire has over a hundred and twenty thousand jobs available and eighty-five hundred people on the unemployment list. And they're on the unemployment list for like six to seven weeks, and they're going right to work, so. But, oh, this, this one you can get, Justin.
Yeah, okay.
But this will tell you what the U.S. average is across all fifty states. I'll sit over here and tell you. Across all fifty states, and they give you by the ten largest counties. So at the ten largest counties, you'll see that the wage increase that they're paying is, uh, well, one of them is eight point something percent. But right now, across all fifty states, it's five point two percent increase. First time you get the numbers in July that go from June of last year to June of this year.
Now, Bob, what about our own states?
Our own states write in at the five point two percent. And that's whether it's elected position, not elected position, uh, government positions or private sector positions, possibly be as close as five point six or five point nine by the third quarter.
And do we have the smallest counties of employment?
What's that?
Do we have one that shows the smallest counties of employment?
No, what they do is they take the ten largest counties and they show you what the wage rates are. That's across the nation. And those are the ten largest counties. Yeah, but you can go right to New Hampshire and plug it in, and you're going to see it's at five point two percent. And that, that's all, that's all the sectors except the service sector.
You recommend cutting that half.
Service sector's actually gone up by thirty-three to forty percent. And you know, you see the jobs go from nine dollars to fourteen or whatever, so that makes quite the impact, you know? So that's where they are right now at five point two, which I couldn't get those numbers before till October.
Right.
Uh, and that, I think with the next quarter, you're probably looking at five point six to five point nine.
So we're going to have an interesting budget season.
So when you're looking at inflation, which is, uh, actually eight point six percent...
Right.
Right now, when they projected that number. And people are making five point two percent more on their wages. And you look at the numbers, and it's full employment, so, you know, it does have an impact because you see that the grocery store prices or the gas going up.
Yeah, yeah, we're noticing.
But, you know, and they're not used to paying that. But if, for those people that have received that increase, it's, it diminishes that number a little bit, right now.
Well, Old Home Day, if they had maybe twenty-twenty prices, would be golden.
And even gas now is starting to travel down.
Yeah.
You know, it is...
I, I guess the governor was on, he was worried about fuel prices going up. And that's could be a big hit for, like, oil, people eating with oil this winter.
Right now.
Yeah.
Right now. And if you talk to people that, uh, are talking to their customers that are invested in the stock market or whatever, you know, they're telling them that the basis of the recession is kind of like over because of the, though the prices are down on the stocks...
Right.
They're, they're increasing. And they're moving monies to different places, to bonds or whatever, you know? I've been hearing it for two weeks now because the kids from California here. My son's working out of our house in the afternoon, just calming people down with how their money's invested, you know?
I, I would, uh, I'd say we're going to have an interesting budget season this year.
I could tell you the phone calls are slowing down in the private sector substantially.
So, related to what?
Building.
Building? Oh, really?
When you look at the work that's being done out there...
Those were booked, right?
Those we had booked last winter and this spring. The houses that are going up, all the big ones. And those are houses working on. The new calls are virtually nonexistent. They're slowing down. And there's still a ton of commercial work on that because that money has been in the pipeline now for a long time.
But I will tell you, if you try to find a contractor, which I just finally got, a painting contractor, just to come in and paint all the trim on the house.
No, but what I'm saying, Bob, is those, we're booked this year because we had previously booked that work.
Right.
But come this winter, you're going to start seeing people having time to do stuff again, wanting to book your work. It's changing that quickly.
Well, right now, though, if you're going out, especially in residential, trying to get a painter, it'll be three months to find...
You're losing, that stuff was booked last year. I'm talking the new stuff. It's really changing.
Well, I use it, I'm new in the circuit, and I'm sure I'm not the only one because there are more people putting some money, they don't, they don't want to sell.
Right.
Even though the price is good, there's no place to move to.
Right.
You know?
Joe Maria and I were laughing that. We're thinking of making a painting company. We're going to hire some high school kids to come in and do it for you.
Yeah, I, I got to tell you, I thought a certain number was going to come in for my trim.
Yeah.
It was double that number.
Wow.
And that was the best price I could get.
Did you call Cerpro?
Cerpro, oh, yeah. They're booked.
Yeah.
I couldn't get Cerpro. What's the other? Master something?
They were the cheapest when we did that. That's why I was wondering.
Yep.
I got this guy, uh, Major Painting, was only out of that, uh, Little Connection newspaper that we're getting him.
Yep.
He happened to be in there, and I called, and I caught him where he had nothing. And then he hasn't started on mine yet because he picked up two other jobs besides. And you know what's funny is I made a deposit right away, and I saw the next day it was Cash at St. Barry's Bank. Because I got online banking, and I look at, and I'm saying, wow. He just told me he couldn't make it because he picked up a couple of big jobs. I can see, that's, that's the game that goes on, you know, where they'll pick up a bunch of jobs and try to keep everybody satisfied.
Yeah, yeah. And speaking of painting, just a, a offshoot, a painter's been contacted?
Um, well, we spoke last Friday in the parking lot for about fifteen or twenty minutes. And he said he, we are on the radar. He did start prepping. I told him he was approved to go forward, so I'll, I'll give him another hauler.
Oh, good. You did talk to him personally.
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, I did.
Okay. We were still in public comment. I'm going to call Linda. No, okay, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any, Bob, anything else?
That's it.
I want to say thank you for doing that because it gives us, we're looking forward to the following.
When I get the fall, when I have that, but I don't see it going backwards.
No, I can see, please.
Not for next year.
Yeah.
See, I'm smiling, Dave. Don't make me frown.
I'm just going to tip you over.
Lean wants a two percent. That's all she's asking for.
That's right. I'm agreeing with that. I'm in that.
Okay, um, I'm going to close public comment and bring it to you.
I'm very busy, and I have no comments for the board this evening.
Thank you. Um, Justin, we know you're there.
Yeah, I'm here still.
Put the beer down and talk to us.
I don't, I don't have anything tonight.
Oh, well, we can change that for you. Go ahead. Now, anything else for the group, seriously?
Nope.
Okay. Just to give you the opportunity, Dave, it's to you.
I'm good, Mike. Everything I think we addressed.
Okay. Um, last week was a little bit late. Um, I don't think we have to go in non-public tonight. There's nothing on the radar scope. And so I'm waiting for a motion, Dave.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at, well, eight twenty-four.
Aye, second, so moved.
Missing the hearing.
All right, thanks, Justin. See you later. Remember, this only is a one-link lopit.
All right, thank you.
Take care, Justin. Hey, the phone worked pretty good? Everyone sounded pretty good?
Yeah, it worked out perfect.
Okay, because when I, we reached the other phone, I tell you, I was at home, and the thing is, I got half of it.
Yeah, that's not good.
Yeah, okay. Oh, um, I'll talk about that afterwards. I'm donating this to the town. I'm going to ask Lean for a hundred dollar rec- a hundred dollar, uh...